Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the June 10, 2024 School Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Lindsay Nead, here. Maggie Smith here, Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Kievan Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Excused.
Chris Lau.
With six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie has second, to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. Moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, first I'd like to, the school district of Holman, would like to thank Scott Willinger and Brian Jackson of WKTY for live streaming our 2024 graduation event at the Lacrosse Center on May 25th. Their professionalism and expertise helped make the day special for our graduates and really allowed for many other family members and friends to enjoy such a special occasion of our students and seeing their successful completion of high school. So we just wanted to say thank you to them. And then next on our agenda, this is actually a very exciting moment in my career as a superintendent. It's the first time we have a state champion, state champion in more than one event in the school district. So if Lydia and her and her family members could come up, if they don't mind, and just stand over here, and we'll let Lydia introduce who she has with us, or with her in that, and then I just wanted to say a few words. So, yeah, who do you have with you today, Lydia?
This is my dad, John. This is my stepmom, Krista. This is my mom, Carrie. And this is my stepdad, Ian.
Yeah, so thank you so much for coming this evening. We really wanted to take time to honor Lydia and what she's accomplished because it's definitely memorable, memorable for our school district. So we're excited to recognize you as our standout student athlete for your amazing performances track season and your incredible achievement at the state track meet. You have shown extraordinary talent and dedication smashing records and setting new ones for our track and field program. Last year as a freshman, she had a school record in the 100, and then she went on this year to break her own record and also set a new record in the 200 meter dash, in the 55 meter dash. And remember, she's only a sophomore, so you really set yourself up for a lot to accomplish here yet. This season, Lydia's hard work paid off big time at the state track meet. She became the state champion in the 100 meter dash with lightning fast time of 12:05 seconds, but she didn't stop there. Later that day, she won her second state championship in the 200 meter dash with an amazing time of 24.58 seconds. Winning two state titles in one day is just incredible and shows the relentless talent that you have. Your achievements are so inspiring, and you're not just a champion, but you're also a role model for so many of our students and a huge source of pride for our entire school district. So watching you run is such a joy, and we're all so proud of you. We know your future is bright, and we can't wait to see what you achieve next. So we just want to say congratulations, and we'd love to get a picture with you because you never know what you might accomplish someday. So, go ahead.
All of us?
Yeah, let's do it.
Right.
You didn't know you were going to get a big family picture.
I know. This is so awesome.
Oh, they all ducked out. Oh, I see how you ducked out.
I was standing back.
No.
Thank you, though. All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1, Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards, Director of Learning and Assessment Lacey Sin, and District Literacy Coach Tracy Summerfelt will present the annual evaluation of the K-12 literacy program. This item is for report only and will not appear on the consent agenda.
All right, well, good evening. We're excited to be up here as part of our instructional services team to share with you our first annual evaluation of our K-12 literacy program. We've always done an internal evaluation of it, but we have a lot of things that are coming with Act 20, some of which involve a lot of public reporting. We thought this would be a great time to bring the board up to speed on where we're at, what we're working on, and what's coming our way with this. So I'll let Lacey and Tracy just introduce themselves quick before we dig in.
Hi, everyone. I am Lacey Sin, Director of Learning and Assessment.
And I'm Tracy Summerfelt, the District Literacy Coach. So we're going to go through the language arts curriculum that we have approved. We're going to step through some of the assessment results, give you a brief overview of Act 20 because there's a lot there. So we'll give you kind of the 10,000-foot view of that. We're going to go through what we have currently for our instructional materials, K-12, and then talk about some of the process and what we're looking for in terms of adoption of new materials, and then have some time for all of your questions. So just a year ago, this past May, we had representatives from our district ELA committee who brought to you our newly revised ELA curriculum. That is linked there in your board packet. So that was the cycle that we went through in terms of self-study, looking at where we had been with our old curriculum as compared to the standards and how we matched up with the new standards and all the work in revising that to become up-to-date with the new standards that DPI had released there. So then part of our annual review is that we always take a look at assessment results, and some of these are going to be very familiar to you because some of them we bring to you as review every year, and others are going to be more internal measures that we take a look at as well. So this one should be very familiar. So this is our proficiency through eighth graders on our ELA portion of Wisconsin Forward. You'll see that comparatively speaking, we do very, very well. Still not where we want to be at just yet. We still have some work to do overall, as well as how we support some of our underserved groups. And the same for our ELA Aspire Pre-ACT. This is the assessment that our ninth and 10th graders take. Again, comparatively speaking, doing fairly well and making some nice progress there. Still have some work to do, the same kind of gaps and things that we're looking at that we see with Forward as well. And then this was the year we had some pretty tremendous growth with our ACT. That's our 11th graders. We hit the 50% of our students meeting proficiency on that. Again, comparatively speaking, great, still not quite where we want to be. So that's something that we're going to continue to be taking a look at.
Okay, so these are all of our district ELA assessments that our students take that are not our state assessments. So you'll see here I have it broken down into our elementary. So kindergarten, we do something that's called I Ready. I'm sure if you're a parent in the school district, you might have gotten emails or heard about I Ready. So our kindergarten students take, these are all assessments that are done with a teacher. So they're one-on-one with a teacher. They're not a computer-adapted assessment. So they take an uppercase letter name fluency, and they do that in the fall, winter, and spring. They do lowercase letter name fluency, again, that's the fall, winter, and spring. A lowercase letter sound fluency, again, fall, winter, spring. A phonological awareness, so we look at the syllables there, and we just do that in the fall and winter. A phonological awareness, phoneme blending, where if I said the word cat, they would be able to say cat. So they would be able to blend those phonemes or those sounds together. We do that in the winter and spring. Phonological awareness, phoneme segmentation, so that would be the opposite. That's where a student would break it apart. So if I said cat, the student would say cat. So they'd break those phonemes apart. That is winter and spring. And then a pseudo-word decoding fluency, that is winter and spring. Pseudo-word, another name for that would be a nonsense word. So again, we're wanting to know if students are able to decode rather than looking at sight. So for instance, the word zet, z-e-t, would be a pseudo-word. You'd be looking to see that the student knew consonant, short vowel consonant. Dibe, d-i-b-e, again, a pseudo-word. We'd be looking to see if that kindergarten student, or actually that's more of a first grade skill, would know that that long vowel is long that i because of that silent e at the end. They also do a phonics grouping quick placement assessment. So that's another phonics assessment that we just do the winter and spring. First grade, they do the I Ready diagnostic reading, and that is a computer adaptive assessment. It starts them out right, so first grade, it would have started them out at the end of kindergarten because they had not yet gotten those skills as a first-grade student at the beginning of the year, and it adapts. Then the next time they take that assessment, it starts them where they're at, and again, it adapts to how they're answering questions. So first graders do that fall, winter, spring. They do also the pseudo-word decoding fluency. They just do that in the winter and if, I'm sorry, in the fall, and if they're not proficient, the winter and spring. And then they also do a reading fluency passage, and again, this is a one-on-one with a teacher where they read a passage. The teacher listens to them, wants to get a words-per-minute accuracy on that passage. Our second and fifth graders, again, do that I Ready diagnostic, that computer adaptive assessment, fall, winter, spring, and they also do that reading fluency passage with their teacher as well. Our middle school students, six through eight, all do the I Ready diagnostic reading computer adaptive assessment, fall, winter, spring. This year, our ninth graders did the pre-ACT 8, 9 in the fall, which is pretty much like a practice test. It gets them prepared for when they do take that assessment in the spring. It prepares them for what that test looks like, how it feels, how questions are worded, the whole process of taking that test because it's a pretty long test, and they have never had to take a test for that long of a time before. So they do that in the fall. And then our 10th and 11th graders do pre-ACT. So it's a little bit of a different version than the pre-ACT 8, 9, and they did that again in the fall. So that was the first year that we tried that this year in order to try to prepare our students and to have them go through that process. So that when they did do take the state assessment in the spring, they just feel more secure and again, know kind of how to go through all that. So results, I Ready. So you are looking right now at our ELA, and this is just our elementary. And I'm just going to quick tell you those colors. So in the red, that would be our well below. These are percentiles, so that would be our zero, if you're a zero to seven percentile in the nation. So it's scoring you in the nation. Below would be about an eight to 24%. Average is 25 to a 75%. High is 76 to 94%, and very high advanced would be our 95 to 100 percentile. Again, this is in the nation. Here is our middle school I Ready ELA assessment results as well. Again, those percentiles, those colors are still the same. That's a percentile in the nation. Here you can see results from that fall practice test that we did do. So you can see the pre-ACT 8, 9, which is what our ninth graders took. They have a little bit different wordage. They have basic approaching proficiency and proficient. We're looking for ready to take the ACT or reading, meeting those readiness skills. And click on the next one. Here we have pre-ACT. So these are our 10th and 11th graders in the areas of English and reading as well. These are our, sorry, these are our 11th graders. The last one was our 10th graders. These are our 11th graders, again, in the areas of English and reading.
Okay, so undoubtedly, I'm hearing a lot about Act 20 over this year. In fact, I think I had several board reports where I kept saying, you'll be hearing more about that later. Well, today is later. So there are a lot of components that have impacts, not only on how we report things statewide, but also instruction and assessment. So this team has been doing a lot of work around Act 20 this year. So one of the pieces that is new this year is that we are going to be required to send a lot of detailed information to DPI starting next July. So we'll be, and we're going to get into a lot of these details deeper into the presentation. But all students in grades 4K through 3, they're identified as at risk on the reading readiness screener, and Lacey's going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But essentially, anybody who scores below the 25th percentile is going to need a reading readiness plan. Those students will then have a diagnostic battery of assessments. We will have to give a listing of what those assessments are to the state. Then we will have to then identify the number of students that after those diagnostics were continued to be identified as at risk. We will then, the next two kind of go together. So students will then have to be provided a series of research-based interventions that will be part of a pretty detailed reading, personal reading plan. We will have to report those numbers to the state as well. Then at the end of the year, we'll have to report how many students we were able to be successful with, and we met the goals of those interventions and personalized reading plans, and then also the number of students who went to a special education referral because we did not meet the goals of those plans. Then we move into the screener, the diagnostics, and the parent reporting. Lacey gets that piece.
So you heard me talk about I Ready. The state now is going to tell us in grades 4K through 3 what screener we have to use, and we do not yet know the screener. And we will not know until sometime in July. They're hoping July 1st. So we do not yet know the screener that will be chosen by the state. But our grades 4K, well, 4K doesn't take it, but our younger grades, you saw me do the K through 3, they will not be taking I Ready in reading next year unless that one is selected by the state. Now, depending on what the state chooses, grades four and five will either use I Ready or they'll stick to the screener that the state uses for 4K through 3. And the reason yet we not sure with those grades is we don't yet know, again, what the screener that's going to be chosen and if it's going to be applicable to four and five. Maybe it's more of an early literacy screener that's going to fit more with our younger grades and not really fit for our four and five grade students. Once that screener is given, caregivers will be provided the screening results, and we're going to be doing this electronically. We've already started doing this a little bit this year with I Ready. And so we're going to continue with electronically for families, where we have to let the parents and guardians know the overall performance and skills in each literacy area that the student is assessed on, and the percentile rank within that, and a description of each of those literacy skills and what that means. Then we also have to give a diagnostic assessment. So if a student scores below the 25th percentile on that initial screener, then we have to do more assessments to kind of find out where is really that need of that student and really drill down. So any student who scores below the 25th percentile, again, we're going to have to give these diagnostic assessments to as well. Now, a caregiver can also request that diagnostic assessment is given, or a teacher can also request if a diagnostic assessment is given, depending on, you know, how a student did on that initial screening. And then parent reporting, all parents and guardians are going to get the screening information, and then for identified students, that diagnostic results will go home to them, as long as a family history survey that needs to be completed, and information about dyslexia and referring their child for a possible special ed referral.
Which takes us then into our personal reading plans and interventions. So Lacey just stepped through kind of the process of how we get to that. I will say that much of this is what our intervention teams are currently doing. However, the level of specificity that has to be included in these plans, as well as the timelines, the screenings, the reporting, all those things, are a lot more specific than what we've had in the past. What's kind of exciting about all of this is that all of us are in the same boat. So we've been working very closely with every district and had a lot of meetings with other instructional services teams in our region. And so we are all working on building these pieces and knowing that our students shift district to district, working on having some common language, common forms, so that we can make that as smooth as possible for all of our students. But there you will see all the pieces that will have to be included in the plan, as well as the reporting pieces, where we drill down into the specific areas of literacy. One thing that might be new in this is the strategies for caregivers to support at home. So there's a big push to make sure that families are really part of the problem-solving process in all of this and really working towards a partnership in it, as well as providing, we like to think we do current or ongoing communication of progress with students anyway and families, but this identifies at least a minimum number of weeks that we have to touch base as well.
A separate piece of Act 20 is the required reading training for all of our teachers in K-3, including our teachers of special education, teachers for multilingual learners, along with our principals at the elementary level and our district reading specialist, Lacey. They have to complete a reading training that's endorsed by the Center for Effective Reading Instruction. And what that means is that it needs to be evidence-aligned, systematic, and based on structured literacy practices. It needs to align with the National Reading Report and focus and build an understanding of direct explicit instruction for the teachers. As we looked at the approved list of trainings from the state, we opted to go with the Institute for Multisensory Education, or MZ, Comprehensive Orton-Gillingham Plus Training. It's a 30-hour training for our teachers that they needed to complete, and all of those teachers in that identified population have to start that by July 1st of 2025. We chose that one because we felt it would build well on the training that we've already done for our teachers in this area over the past couple of years. We knew that it would build not only their knowledge and capacity and their skills, but also provide them with some resources that could be used at any tier of instruction, so be it universal in intervention or that intensive level of instruction as well. Additionally, what's been exciting is we have received grant monies from the state, about $75,000 worth to help offset the cost of the training, and so that has been really nice. Currently, you can see we have 61% of our staff who have already completed that training as of today. We have another 13% of staff that will complete that this summer, and then 28, 26%, I think.
26, yeah, 26.
That will complete it during that next, during next school year. Additionally, our elementary admin team and Lacey, we will have 100% of them trained after the summer. So we're excited about where we're going with that and seeing teachers begin to apply those practices within their reading instruction. So another aspect of Act 20 was what needs to be in our early literacy instruction and curriculum. And you can see all of these different areas that must be included in the instruction. So phonological awareness, which is that bigger awareness of sounds, rhyming and syllables and words and sentences. Phonemic awareness, which are the sounds themselves and how they work to create words. Phonics is connecting the letters to the sounds and the spellings that go with them. But additionally, it goes into beyond those foundational skills, building background knowledge for students so that they have a greater understanding and comprehension, their oral language development in answering questions and asking questions, building their vocabulary, instruction and writing, instruction and comprehension, both listening comprehension and reading comprehension, and reading fluency. The curriculum, the materials that we use, nope, you can go back to the previous one.
There, all right.
Yes, thank you. The curriculum that we use needed to be evaluated based off of the standards from Act 20. And so over the past two years, as Kim talked about in the very first slide, when we presented our curriculum document to you, we had already been doing some of that work, and we're looking for resources that would align with these areas of instruction. And while the state says, this is what you have to include, sorry, I lost my train of We really wanted to focus on being able to integrate all of these instead of having separate pieces that didn't work as well together. So the DPI is establishing a non-competitive grant program where you can apply for reimbursement to some level if you adopt curriculum that fits in these areas. Now I'm ready.
Okay.
Sorry. Our current curriculum and resources at the elementary level include reading and writing units that are based on the standards and that utilize resources from the reading units of study and the writing units of study that are published by Teachers College Reading and Writing. We also use small group instruction and reading foundational skills with a resource called Guided Phonics, and that was training that we had done in the last couple of years. And then our teachers have been working to create universal phonics lessons for all grade levels based on the instructional practices rooted in evidence-based reading instruction. What we know now is that the reading units of study promoted something that is now prohibited by the state called the three-quing system. And that's where, instead of having the student focus on decoding a word, you ask them, well, does that make sense? Does that sound right? Or take your best guess, does it look right? Those practices are now prohibited by Act 20, and because those are promoted within the units of study, even though we had been moving away from that, we wanted to make sure that we really looked for new resources at the elementary level. The middle and high school, their curriculum and their resources are created and based on the standards and targets as well. So as we move into the 24, 25 school year, we are focusing on purchasing new curriculum resources after doing some exploration this year. So at the elementary level, Act 20 had established an Early Literacy Curriculum Council made up of members from across the state who evaluated curriculum resources based off of the criteria that they were looking for in the act. That will happen annually, and they will update those lists. When we went to our elementary curriculum committee, Elementary ELA Curriculum Committee in the fall, to say, this is what's happening in the state, there will be a list that comes out from the state of approved resources. We were, at that point in time, were ready to pilot and to try out some things and see what worked best for us. And the committee said, we think we need to wait. We don't want to make a misstep. This is a really big decision. And they wanted to hold off until we had that list of approved curriculums from the state. We had identified four possible resources to move forward with, and we had our fingers crossed for many months because it took longer than the state thought it would, that those resources would be on that list. Two of the four were on the list from the Joint Finance Committee is who the list eventually came down through. And so in April, we had about 40 elementary teachers from across K-5 and all of our elementary schools embark on a journey of exploration using these new curricular resources. The feedback that we got from them and their insights was overwhelming, and they are choosing Amplify CKLA, which is a comprehensive English Language Arts curriculum resource. So it includes all of those areas of instruction, and it is one of the four curricular resources approved by the state committee. We will fully implement that this fall. At the middle school and high school, we had other discussions that happened. Sixth grade really explored lots of different things, and if they wanted to go the same route that seventh and eighth did, but upon examining things further, they are choosing to adopt Amplify ELA, which will align better with the elementary and hopefully build that transition from elementary to middle school for them, along with just really high-quality texts and units of study, but still gives them some freedom to implement units that they've also written in the past. Seventh and eighth grade is opting to add additional texts to their existing units that will strengthen and deepen their units and their students' understanding, and those will be purchased July 1. And then the high school, excuse me, knowing that this big impact that the elementary was going to have, they were able to do their purchases this last school year during the 23, 24 school year. 23-24 school year, and they also chose to add additional texts that would strengthen and deepen their units. And also, both, all of those took a close look at their texts that they were currently using and decided to take some texts out and then add new texts in. The links for the text lists are provided there, and that's where we're at.
Questions for us?
You know I always have questions. So, okay, so you talked about the diagnostic assessment for the bottom 25th percentile. If they do not meet their goals, you mentioned the possibility of special ed or program? And I'm curious, where does Title I fit into this?
Yep, so it's part of that bigger multi-level systems of support piece, really, which is where I said, you know, "We really are doing a lot of this already." So, there's a lot of language in Act 20 that has to do with dyslexia and how to access a special education referral. So, regardless, we would still go through the same process of setting goals, intensive interventions, refinements as we go along the way. But that's the language that's part of the statute.
So, Title I services would still apply to those kids that qualify there?
Yeah.
And then, those that needed special ed would still...
It would still operate the same way in terms of access and still having to go through an evaluation process and that whole piece as well. I think the one thing that might be a little different for us, and we don't know the exact numbers yet, because we don't know the diagnostic and we don't know how they're going to set that 25th percentile yet, but how many students this might apply to. So, we are examining the reality that it will probably be some of our classroom teachers that will have to provide some of these as well, depending on capacity of our intervention staff.
And are kids that are on IEPs also going through these assessments? Or is it because they're on an IEP, they're excluded from this type of evaluation?
So, that's a big question that's still out there as yet. There's also how it works with our student, our ML students who are on language plans as well. And the IEP and the personal reading plan and then an individualized language plan should operate fairly similarly. So, we're looking for common language with that, which is another reason why we're working with the area directors to make sure that we're all in step with each other.
Okay, alright, backing up...
Some of these pieces yet are really muddy yet.
Okay. And I'm just, backing up to the beginning part of your presentation, when we were talking about the ELA ACT scores, there was that huge jump between the 21-22 and 22-23 school year. What drivers do you think caused that? I mean, it looks really significant.
It's very significant. We're still kind of digging into that, figuring out. The ELA team had made some changes, but to have that radical of a change in a single year, plus it's a different cohort of students, it just leaves probably more questions than we have answers at this point.
Okay.
But if we could replicate it, that would be awesome.
I think you kind of already answered this, but what about the current fourth and fifth graders that are below that 25th percentile? What kind of resources are available to them?
We talked about, in Holman, we care that kids are reading all the way through our system, so we do not plan to cut it off at third grade. We are anticipating following the same system with our fourth and fifth graders as well.
I have a couple too. Could we go back, actually, a couple slides just to the ones that show the pre-ACT? I don't know if this is what Jennifer was asking or not, but I was just, I was looking at these when I was reviewing this, and if you go, like, and there is that big jump in basic...
In the state assessment, alright. This one?
No, the red, yellow, green, 11th grade, and they say 23 to 24 yearly.
There.
I just wasn't following, like, are these, is this like us peer state?
So, this is the one that we did, only our district did. So, this is like the practice. This is not the pre-ACT secure, which is the state one. This is just the pre-ACT. So, we did this one just in the fall, and this was a practice test where they went through the whole process. They took a test. It was very similar to actually the pre-ACT secure, but it was not the actual state assessment. The pre-ACT secure is only given in the spring.
So, is it fall on the left and spring on the right?
Nope, one says English and one is reading, so they're different.
Okay, that's what I'm missing.
So, they take the pre-ACT in the areas of English, reading, math, and science. So, I'm just, we just pulled data for English and reading.
Okay, and the jump, so then the jump is from 10th to 11th, where it goes from 32 to 45? On the right, that says basic?
Yeah.
So, I was just trying to understand.
10th grade students?
So, these are 10th graders.
Yep.
Yep. So, again, in the area of English and reading, so two different assess, I mean, two different subjects, yep.
But the 10th grade reading to the 11th grade reading?
Yeah, I think the hard part with them is it's the first year that you've done this. So, like, we couldn't say, "How did the 11th graders do the prior year to compare that cohort group?" Because we don't have the data for that cohort group. Because I think what you're seeing here is, which kind of, I was viewing the same thing as our basic, amount of basic went up from 10th to 11th grade, but it's a different group of students. So, it's like, we'd have to kind of say, "Well, how did those 11th graders do the prior year?"
And I'm, and I'm going to say, this was also...
There's more in basic than there is proficient on this slide.
Pardon me?
For the reading, there's more falling out in basic than there even is in proficient.
Yeah. And this was a different format for these students. So, the only format we could use for the practice was paper pencil. So, the old bubbles, where they had to bubble and fill them in, and you would be surprised how many students struggled with even filling in their name appropriately and their birthday. So, I, could it be a format? These students have never taken an assessment, a state assessment.
They didn't have Scantrons like the rest of us.
Paper pencil, right? They are so used to taking state tests or even our diagnostic screeners where we had STAR before, everything through the computer. And so, could have that have been a factor? I don't know.
They are working to move this to a digital format.
They are, yes, yes. It's a different, and it's hard to compare. This one, it gives you, the great thing about it is it gives them a predictive score for the actual state assessment, the pre-ACT secure, and it gives them things to work on as well. But it also is a little different because it's a little shortened version. It's not going to put the students through the whole, like, two and a half hours. It's going to be, you know, two hours, so not like completely shortened, but it's just a little bit different too, so.
Thank you. And then, I guess just another thought I have. So, first of all, thank you, because I know this has been like Fast and Furious, and that there has not been like a runway to get districts' support for a lot of this and that the funds are still tied up. But I'm curious if there's concerns, like, kind of with all districts, about whether or not the approved resources or the approved curricula could change year to year, depending on like who's on joint finance? Or is that a concern? Or do they feel pretty confident in what's been selected?
I think, well, Tracy can speak to this too, but I think we felt very confident in, one, because our district team had done a lot of research to see the best that was out there, and what we landed on actually ended up being one of the final ones we had determined as, it was one we were interested in piloting before the team came out from the state with theirs. Our understanding is that each year they will just add to the list, they wouldn't be taking away.
Okay. Just a huge... So, staying on this slide for a second, you had mentioned that you use the pre-ACT to help determine who can qualify for the ACT or who, no, not for qualify.
No.
They all take the ACT?
Yes, correct.
So, it's not just those that are like approaching proficiency?
It's a state-required assessment, so everyone has to take it.
But it is great for setting, this is where we're starting. These are some goals we can set. These are some areas. It even breaks it down into, here are some areas you might want to work on prior to taking the assessment this spring. Other questions?
And along the same lines with the Scantrons and things, for the little kids, for taking it on the computer, are there challenges with them even knowing how to use a computer, let alone they're taking a test? Or is there a lot of training for the kids on, is it easy? I guess, I don't know what it...
So, our younger students, so grades, well, kindergarten all was done one-on with a teacher, so they weren't on a, on a device. Our first and second graders did it on iPads, so they are very familiar with iPads because they've had iPads since they're kindergarten students. So, it's an app, I mean, they click on it.
There's not a lot of room for error, confusion?
QR codes. So, they didn't even have to type in logins. They just scanned it and it logged them in, so they didn't, we didn't have to worry about passwords and usernames. Yes, third grade, that would be their first year on a Chromebook, taking that at the beginning of the year. But I know a lot of Chromebooks, are they touchscreen?
I think so, I think so. But what's also good is that having that in the fall with that helps prepare us for the forward and the spring, which would also be...
And, and again, I don't know what the state is going to select. I just know the ones that we have used and the ones we currently use, like I said, is iReady, and it does walk students before they can even take the test. They have to watch a little short video, and then they have to practice using the tools. So, if there's math tools like counters, they have to practice doing that, and the test won't, it won't even let them start the test until they've practiced that. So, that's really helpful for our younger students as well.
I think our teachers also do a really great job of monitoring the classroom during the testing to see what's happening. I know several also gave it in small groups for the younger grades versus whole groups, so they could really see one-on-one, not one-on-one, but in a group of six, what are the kids doing? Additionally, there's a rush flag that pops up if somebody is just popping through things really quickly. And so, then that gives another idea of, oh, we may need to take them aside and pause them and say, "Hey, we need to slow down and just think more carefully," so.
So, if a child doesn't really pass that first explanation series of how the test is going to work, it'll flag and a teacher can work with them?
It won't let them, yep. And there's different tools, so they have to click on each one and practice before the test will even let them begin, yeah. So, it won't even show up that they can start. There's no even start button to start the test until they have practiced, and the teacher would be able to say like, "Oh, you know, I might need to sit next to this student and show her a little bit here."
Okay, thanks.
Pretty good? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, moving on to item 8.2. Kim Edwards will continue with the field experience contract for UW Stout.
Alright.
This item will appear on the June 25th.
Alright, this one's going to be quick and easy. I am just seeking your approval to renew our existing MOU that we have with UW Stout for field experience, so that they continue to place field experience, students and student teachers with us. Our current agreement is soon to run out here, and so this would extend the current agreement till 2026. Any questions about that?
Any questions? Okay, questions? Thank you. Moving on to item 8.3. Director of Transportation, Dan Gira, will now present the new position, float bus driver item for consent on June 24.
Thank you. It looks like coming into this school year, we are short, it seems like I'm always talking about short bus drivers. We do, we're anticipating two, probably three positions for next school year. Good news is, we do have two applicants already that have been through our training program. So, one of them's already obtained their CDL and started subbing for us towards the end of the year, and the other one is working on their CDL. But what keeps happening is when we open these positions, a lot of our sub-drivers end up taking the positions. So, then that leaves us short on subs throughout the year. These subpositions do our bus driving for us, our van driving, EAs and stuff like that. So, what we're proposing is a float bus driving position that would cover AM and PM routes, that would drive bus, van, EA, or other things that we have going on at the bus wash and whatever else we had going on. This would be a 25-hour-a-week position at $25.89 to start, and we do provide paid training for all of our CDL positions that we have. So, we're hoping that this position will be open and that we can start hiring for it before the start of school year. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
No. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Oh, no.
Sorry. Oh, no, we've got the most important one. Oh. Saving the best for last. Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Julie Holman, will present the report only for the 24-25 preliminary budget.
I thought maybe you were giving me the rush flag. Is that what she called it? Like...
I was just trying to see if you were on your toes.
Uh-huh.
There's no flag for you, just...
Thank you. I will try to move through this so it doesn't get too late tonight. This is the preliminary budget, so as you know, there are a few more coming your way before we adopt the original budget in October. And so, there are also changes that will be made between now and that time. So, the development of this budget started in December with budget forecast variables, and it does include all funds, 10, which is general fund, 21, special projects, or as we call it, the gift account, 27, which is special education, 39, debt service, 42, construction, 46, long-term capital improvement trust, Fund 50, school nutrition, and Fund 80, community service. I will point out that in Fund 21 tonight, all we have budgeted so far is for scholarship revenue and expenses, and that's because all of those gift accounts, which exceed 190 different accounts, are reconciled at the end of June, and then their balance becomes their new budget. And so, all of that work needs to occur yet after the fiscal year ends and then load those new balances, because they do carry over those fundraised accounts and gifts accounts, so. The state and local levy revenue in the general fund is calculated using the revenue limit formula. It's based on a five-year trend enrollment projection, typically grade progression for first through 12th, and then estimates for 4K, early childhood, and kindergarten. The enrollment and then also shared cost is included to identify the distribution between aid and levy in the general fund. I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go into the summary. So, since the fund balance for 24-25 fiscal year, the starting balance is the prior year ending, and we haven't ended yet. It is an estimate for fourth quarter. A fourth quarter budget revision for 23-24 will still come your way yet this summer. There are some conservative assumptions for Funds 10 and 27, as well as Fund 50 when it comes to wages and benefits. The conservative assumptions on revenue include an increase of 325 revenue limit per pupil, that's the second of the bionium decision from last year. The per pupil categorical aid will remain the same as 23-24 at $742 per pupil. The board approved a 4.12% wage increase for 24-25, and along with that wage increase is the increase in both the Wisconsin retirement system and the FICA or Social Security Medicare as a percentage of wage, 1.75% for group health premium increase, and 6% for dental. The general fund, the issue paper provided this evening, it does focus primarily on the general fund, our largest operational budget, the estimated revenue being $55.2 million, and the general fund expenditure budget at 57.2, just under .8, 57.8 million. This is a projected budget deficit of around 2.5 million. We knew this was coming. This represents about 4.4% of the general fund expenditure budget. The estimated fund balance next year at this time, June 30 of '25, is just over 14 million, which is about 24.5% of general fund expenditures. The goal set by the board several years ago was 26.2%, so we will be falling slightly below that board-identified percentage of fund balance to expenditure budget. Of course, this deficit is concerning and requires prioritized attention to budget reduction strategies and implementation of those strategies, as well as new revenue generation, which is why there is consideration, movement forward to survey the community this summer and then propose a resolution to go towards an operational referendum next spring, all things that you are aware of on the board. These preliminary 24-25 budgets in DPI summary format are being presented for informational purposes this evening, not for the consent agenda. I will bring forward the proposed budget in August and the original budget at the October annual meeting and budget hearing. Next, I'm just going to move through and highlight the snippets of the budget summary in DPI format. You're familiar with this as well. It is conservative in assumptions and it is preliminary, so please know that these things will change. It is conservative in assumptions and it is preliminary, so please know that these things will change. So we will start with the general operating fund or fund ten and work through the format. Again, the ending twenty-three, twenty-four fund balance becomes the beginning, um, starting place for twenty-four, twenty-five and so until that is audited. Uh, we don't have a, a audited number at this time. That is in the second column of numbers, the twenty-three, twenty-four. This is a draft, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four quarter four budget. Um, again, that'll come forward for approval, um, yet this summer. Fund balance is measured on June thirtieth. It's a one-time snapshot and includes significant receivables. It does include cash, cash equivalents, and non-cash components, such as taxes receivable and federal reimbursement receivable. Line eight does represent the total ending fund balance as of June thirtieth or the end of each fiscal year, and there's three fiscal years shown here. The combined balances in the general fund are estimated at fourteen point one million or twenty-four and a half percent of the general fund expenditures next June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Next, we'll go through the different revenue sources in the general fund. Line eleven is a combination of the general fund tax levy receipts and, um, also, uh, mobile home taxes. It does demonstrate a decrease over the current year. Remember, tax levy in the general fund and state aid, um, the general state to make up the revenue limit total. And so you'll see a decrease here, you'll see an increase on the state aid line item, um, coming up here in a couple slides. So the total estimated local sources for twenty-four, twenty-five is currently twelve million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. I do wanna draw your attention to line fifteen. This is interest on cash balances. We have seen record, uh, interest revenue in this area. I'm projecting it to decrease. The less money we have in the bank in cash to earn interest, the less interest we will make. Um, and we continue to predict that the feds, the feds will reduce rates. Um, they've been slow to do so, um, which is good for this purpose. Um, so we've been able to increase our local revenue sources the last couple of years significantly. I wanted to give you an example since two years prior is not listed on this screen. But in twenty twenty-one and in twenty-one, twenty-two, the interest receipts, um, interest revenue in these line items was twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. The current year estimate is eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So, uh, those interest rates over five percent have really been assisting our local revenue. Next up is the, um, subtotal for other schools, so Wisconsin School District revenue. This is primarily non-resident open enrollment into the school district of Holman and the aid that follows those students into Holman. The open enrollment transfer for twenty-four, twenty-five is estimated to increase, um, to eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is a three percent increase for regular education and a two percent increase for pupils with disabilities, going from thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five. Next is the state sources. I, um, mentioned earlier that the levy in the general fund is estimated to go down. The state source, line thirty-three, is estimated to go up. That's a combination of that three hundred and twenty-five per pupil, but also, um, the state helps with what's called a shared cost. So, did the microphone go off?
No, but it's fine.
Okay. It was like echoing on my side. Shared cost goes into the total, um, calculation for how much of that revenue under the revenue limit is state aid. And we have had a significant debt service expense in twenty-three, twenty-four, and that will help the state aid portion of that revenue, um, under the revenue limit for twenty-four, twenty-five. So that is, um, impacting the aid going up and the levy going down. Overall, the enrollment three-year projection is going down, so the total, we, we may see a difference there. But this is why state aid is going up and levies going down. It has to do with shared cost more than anything. So we estimate the state total sources for twenty-four, twenty-five at forty point one million. Uh, the three-year average student FTE, remember, revenue limit is based on three-year average membership, and that is estimated at three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six. Earlier this year, we talked about the difference between headcount and membership. So remember, that's not headcount, this is membership, FTE. Um, and that's the three-year average, and it's about forty-seven FTE lower than our current three-year average. So we are anticipating some revenue decrease based on that three-year average decline in a membership. The other thing to remember is that summer school FTE is only counted for revenue limit at forty percent. The current estimated three-year average does not include that new fitness center, summer school program that we are now offering. And since that is a brand-new, it isn't currently in our, in our summer school FTE at forty percent. But as we get closer, um, to the fall and have our September third Friday count combined with our summer school counts, we'll have a better idea of that impact on, on revenue and revenue limit. So again, total state sources estimated at forty point one million dollars. Next is federal. Everybody knows that the pandemic relief funds are expiring, and you can see it significantly here. Total sources of federal revenue projected for next year is around three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Just really getting back to where we were before COVID, um, as those SFR funds expire. Next is other financing sources. The first column there, I have reminded the board in the past, that one hundred and fifty-one thousand, that was the sale of Oak Grove. We don't have another school to sell right now, so there's not any revenue, um, projected in that line item for twenty-three, twenty-four or next year. And then if you look at the middle column of numbers in line fifty-four, refund of dispersment, that large number has to do, that three hundred and two thousand, um, has to do with E-rate, um, technology reimbursement for, uh, federal eligible E-rate reimbursable project that was being done this year. It kinda carried over from prior year, but we don't do that to that extent every year. And so that revenue, um, will significantly decline, kinda go back to normal annual amounts in the following year. So the other revenue totals is estimated at ninety-three thousand dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. So just a summary of all the revenues I just showed you. We estimate, um, general fund revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five to be fifty-five million, two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Next, we will move on to the general fund expenditure budget. We start with the instructional, um, budget. Remember, this does include not just teacher wages and benefits and the costs in the classroom, but also, um, educational assistance. So anybody supporting that classroom that's not in the next category of support services. So all of our instructional costs from undifferentiated through regular vocational, physical, uh, curriculum and co-curricular activities, as well as other special needs, that is estimated at twenty-five million, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. Next is the support services. This includes our pupil services, instructional services, general administration, school-level administration, um, business administration. Remember, business also includes all of facilities and transportation, as well as payroll benefits, business office expenses. And then we have central services, insurance and judgments. We do not have any debt service anticipated in general fund next year. That's in a separate fund thirty-nine. And then support services, um, that two hundred and ninety thousand function or line seventy-five includes not only administrative technology costs, but also, um, like other post-employment benefit costs for retirees. It gets lumped into that other support services category. So the total support services estimate for next year is nineteen point eight million dollars. We did reduce building level, um, budgets and some program budgets by ten percent. But we also, um, as, as Kim and her team were sharing earlier, how we have increased costs associated with Act twenty. And so even though we have grants to help support some of that training, um, for the teachers and administrators, we also have a significant curriculum purchase cost, um, that was unanticipated prior to last summer's decisions at the state level. So, um, so Chris, or Kim's budget did not see a reduction for next year because we need to purchase those materials. The inter-fund transfer is the transfer from, um, the general fund to special education, and it's also historically, or the last four years, a transfer to fund forty-six. I'm not proposing we transfer to fund forty-six with this deficit budget that's being proposed. We're gonna, um, pause on that for a year if board approved. But the transfer to special education, as you can see, is, um, increasing for next year based on the increased cost in special education, which is not necessarily supported by increased revenue in special education. So line, um, seventy-seven represents that transfer. And line seventy-eight is the open enrollment tuition payments to other districts and private schools. Uh, we estimate that cost to be, um, five million, three hundred and six thousand. Again, the estimated transfer is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for a regular education student and thirteen thousand, eight fourteen for pupils with disabilities. The private school, um, I don't know the new numbers for the private school transfer. Those all went up quite significantly last year, if you recall. So I'll have to bring that, uh, detail back when DPI has that, that available to us. So the total expenses in the general fund for non-program transactions is just under twelve point five million. Total expenditures then in the general fund, um, for all categories is fifty-seven million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is just a summary of the previous slides with the fund balance, um, plus revenue, minus expenses. Brings us to an estimated line eight total fund balance next July, or next June thirtieth of the fourteen point one million dollars. So, I'm sorry, before I move on, I just wanted to, um, reiterate that this does not meet the board target for fund balance. Some of the reasons, just so it is publicly shared again, for the deficit is, um, due to revenue per pupil limitations. So, um, state funding, slow enrollment decline, record inflation, increased cost of special education, behavioral and mental health expenses, unfunded mandates, and the expiration of the federal pandemic relief funding. To reverse the deficit, school district may need to cut back on certain expenditures or increase revenue generating activities. Deficit spending is highly concerning. The compounding of wages and benefit costs, um, needs to be matched with, with revenue in order to support that, or we need to have budget reductions. So fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures is a leading indicator that measure, uh, measures the overall financial stability of the organization. We have talked about that in the past when it comes to our Moody's rating and going out and borrowing for our capital improvement projects and getting good rates on those, those bonds when we were borrowing. So it is an important indicator to, to, as part of that equation, to keep our Moody's rating up and our borrowing rate low, our cost low. And again, it is a snapshot as of June thirtieth. It is not necessarily equal to cash in the bank, but other, other, um, assets and receivables that are due to the district at that time. Next, I'll move on to the special projects fund, fund twenty-one, also called the gift account and scholarship account here in Holman. As I mentioned earlier, there are over a hundred and ninety accounts that will need to be reconciled, um, at, after June thirtieth. And those budgets will become, and those carryovers will become their new budgets, and those will be filled in for, um, hopefully for the August proposed budget. But currently, this fifty thousand, um, just represents scholarship revenue and expenses. Um, and these are scholarships that we manage in-house. Does not include scholarships, um, for example, given by private donors directly or through the Holman Area Foundation. Next is the special education fund twenty-seven. Expenditures are estimated to increase around two hundred and thirty-nine thousand over the current year, primarily due to increase in staffing costs, greater student needs, and contracted tuition support. The estimated revenue and expenditure budgets for special education are eleven million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. As a reminder, this fund cannot go into a deficit position and nor does it have a fund balance because, uh, special education is underfunded, and that is the purpose of the inter-fund transfer from the general fund. And so those lines ninety-two and ninety-three you see are zero. We make them whole or even, um, through an inter-fund transfer each year, and you can see that on line ninety-five. And it was discussed earlier with the, um, general fund expenditures. That is, next is the debt service fund. This is where we manage the principal interest due annually on our bonds and our notes. The estimated revenue in the debt service account is nine million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand. This includes a levy with a recommendation to apply debt defeesent strategies, trying to maintain a more level mill rate. We are looking at both operational referendum in the future, but also we still need to bond for the balance of the twenty-twenty-two referendum, or twenty-four point seven-five million dollars. And so trying to maintain a more level mill rate for our community, um, may be appreciated. Um, and then, um, the debt defeesence can be used towards the new, um, debt payments. It would still be applied to either financing or future debt payments. So that is an estimated, uh, levy and interest earnings or revenue for debt service of nine point six million. And then the principal and interest due on the bonds for twenty-four, twenty-five currently on the books is seven million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, again, we haven't bonded for the balance, and so that will be coming up either late this year or January, February. And so this may change if there is a payment due yet in twenty-four, twenty-five that's not included based on that new bonding. So the expenditure budget could increase if we, um, need to make payments, um, before the end of the next fiscal year. I also wanted to point out the last line item on this page is the indebtedness. So the current year indebtedness, June thirtieth, is fifty-nine million dollars. The estimated, it's in italics, is seventy-eight point seven. That does include the bonding that will occur this year to complete that referendum. Voter-approved, um, debt for the current capital improvements. This is a chart of our current debt on the books. It does not include that twenty-four point seven-five million that will be bonded for this year. Um, you'll see the orange is being paid off. That was refunded, um, primarily Prairie View construction debt. Um, and so that is expiring and, and paid off. And then the green is the high school addition and remodel from twenty nineteen. The purple is the twenty-twenty-three government obligation notes. If you recall, we did a small amount with notes and we did thirty-five, not small, but out of the fifty million, we did fifteen in notes and we did thirty-five in bonds. And so that large blue, um, section is the government obligation bonds from last year, and those currently go out to twenty forty-two. So that was a twenty-year bond. Next up is the capital projects. This includes funds forty-two and forty-six. I'll start with fund forty-two, which is our construction fund. This is where we manage all of the construction, uh, revenue and expense while the construction is going on. The draw schedule on this changes. And so the current, um, quarter four draft revised budget is estimating that our expenditures for the construction by June thirtieth of this year will be around fourteen point four million. Could be over, could be under. The balance would carry forward for next year's costs. But that is based on the May draw schedule and the most current information that I have from Nexus on how much would be, um, invoiced this current fiscal year. Hearing over, um, the balance of the current, uh, bonds, basically the money that we currently have, and then we'll be adding to that to finish out those projects through, uh, twenty twenty-five. So next year, between twenty-four and, between July one and next June, we estimate that we will spend another forty-two point seven million, and then the balance would, um, trail off next July one through like December of twenty twenty-five, which is the following fiscal year. December of twenty twenty-five, which is the following fiscal year. That's not even on here yet, so. Um, the total expenditures, excuse me, total revenues for, uh, for the capital projects are estimated at just under twenty-five point six million. Total expenditures at forty-two point seven-eight million. Um, I said earlier, I wasn't recommending a transfer to Fund Forty-Six due to the two and a half million dollar deficit that we are projecting. Um, and therefore, the funds that are in there, um, as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five will be approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. So that's the current balance plus some interest earnings over the next twelve months. Um, so out of that total fund balance on line one seventy-eight, about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand is Fund Forty-Six Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund, and the rest of it is construction. Next up is the food service budget, which is Fund Fifty. The revenue is estimated at three million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and the expenditures at three million, seven hundred and six thousand. There, um, we anticipate that the expenditures will actually increase. We've had discussions with Director Gasper on regards to participation in kitchen equipment purchasing, um, specifically for the Evergreen Kitchen. This has been a conversation for two years with the referendum projects, and so we estimate that the expenditure budget in this fund will probably increase by about three hundred thousand dollars, um, to contribute towards those purchases at Evergreen Elementary in the new kitchen. And then finally is Fund Eighty, which is our community service fund. This budget, um, supports our Sale to Success program at the Boys and Girls Club, started about three years ago during the pandemic, um, and it continues to be developed to support Holman youth in conjunction with the school district of Holman. Um, I know that we have a meeting coming up with the BGC folks in town to discuss potential, uh, needs or program support changes. And so the budget that's presented, which is a levy of one hundred thousand and an expense of one hundred thousand, may change. Um, we haven't quite gotten to a one hundred thousand dollar expense yet. Um, as the program grows, we may see that, or we may see that go over. We continue to levy that amount because there are expenses July first through January first, before we even get any of that levy revenue from the, from the municipalities. And so having that carryover in there is really important, and then also some potential to grow the program further. Um, there's some cushion there within Fund Eighty. So that's the current recommendation for Fund Eighty is one hundred thousand, revenue one hundred thousand expense. But that could change too, as we, uh, meet with them and, and discuss additional needs or changes for supporting that Sale to Success program. Any questions?
Do we have sinking funds at all of our buildings now?
We will have, um, sinking funds, beginning with this fall's levy is the, so the, sorry, excuse me. The five-year technology, non-recurring, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar referendum expires this year. And then in the vote that went to the public in twenty twenty-two, it included a recurring six hundred and fifty thousand dollar operational, uh, referendum. Four fifty will be IT still, it'll be technology. So maintaining the technology portion, and two hundred of that then is distributed between the middle school, Evergreen, and Viking. So those three sinking funds will be established after this fall levy. Yeah.
I know we had Prairie View, I know we had Sand Lake, and the high school has something as well?
They do. Um, then mostly the new portion, the seventy thousand square feet that was added, um, they have some. There's very, very little for the original high school. So I'm just going back up to the fund balance for the general fund. Um, that restricted line four includes sinking funds, and that's the estimate for next year on that balance. We, there's plans to spend a couple hundred thousand on a Prairie View project that's in process right now, but it's gonna carry over fiscal year, and most of that expense is actually gonna end up being after July one of this year. Um, and so if we take out two hundred and we add two hundred, we're, yeah.
Yeah. So the IT piece, the IT is part of, you, you're referring to that as a sinking fund also?
No, IT goes directly into their operational budget.
But that's still part of the restricted, uh, also funds.
Um, no, it just is allocated to Director Kathleen Stefani's budget every year as part of her operational budget.
Okay.
So we're just basically taking it out of a non-recurring for her separate budget and adding it to her annual operational budget for technology.
So given our budget deficit, expected or predicted budget deficit, and, um, you know, looking at where our fund balance is dropping to, are you expecting any impact to our Moody's rating this year?
I am not yet because twenty-four percent is still healthy.
Okay.
You've seen the projection, though, if things don't change and what happens to that fund balance. So I would anticipate that we would, uh, not change rating levels for this bonding that's coming up at the end of this calendar year. But that's just my guess. I, I'm not positive. It's one, it's one variable that impacts the rating, so.
And one last question, the bonding that still needs to happen later this year is, do you expect the timeline of that to be equivalent to the timeline we have for our last group of funds that were bonded, or is it going to extend beyond that? Do you, or do, do we not know?
So you can only go up to twenty years?
That's the maximum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's what we did on the last one?
So I'll say twenty years or less. Um, so if you recall, we did the high school addition and remodel three years ago? What does it say? It says twenty nineteen.
Yep.
Twenty nineteen is the high school addition and remodel, and we did not do twenty years. It ends right here. It was a shorter term, and we were able to do that based on property, but property valuation increases, um, just that combination of being able to structure the debt and afford to structure the debt without raising the mill rate.
But this is a much larger chunk of money, right?
It is. I was just saying that we don't always go out to twenty years.
Okay.
We didn't in, in that scenario.
Okay.
But we did with the blue.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
There is, um, if you can recall, I'll try to draw it here. Um, we have given, provided to the board in the past, like trying to maintain, and we don't need to maintain it at, I'll, I'll just say seventy million. We don't wanna necessarily maintain this, uh, across the, across the way, but basically, there's some room here to, um, balance out that debt levy with the balance of what we need that was already approved. The reason we didn't levy or bond for the entire amount again is because we have a term when we need to spend that down. And so knowing that these large projects and three buildings plus two other buildings for playgrounds would take many years to do, um, and we didn't necessarily know what rates would be and investments rates would be, so we were breaking it up between three different issues. Yep.
Okay, those are my questions.
I just have, I just have one, just out of curiosity, because I wasn't here. The twenty-six point two percent established by the board, aside from the Moody's rating, what else, I guess, what else helped them land on twenty-six point two? And out of curiosity, do like, do you know how that compares to our near-peer districts or to the state? Like, is that?
I don't know if all boards set a percentage goal. Um, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures has been a dashboard goal for us in the past. Uh, it's not just maintaining a high Moody's rating for borrowing at a lower cost. It's also, um, because it's, like I said earlier, it's not all cash. So it helps with our, um, cash flow. It helps to balance out when we're not getting money from the state or money from the municipalities because expenditures are pretty, more or less even, I'll say. Um, a few years ago, we extended the pay schedule, for example, for educators, um, to an option to go at a twenty-six pay versus a twenty-two pay. Over seventy percent of our teachers have elected that. So it really ends up being a much more balanced output of resources each month, and we do not get aid and levy at those same increments. So we typically have a, uh, shortfall in cash, like, um, early December and early June. Um, and then we get like our state aid, or we get our, you know, the tax levy proceeds come in January, February, and then like April, and then we get the balance in August. Um, so we have these points when you get, um, large cash influx, but we have regular output. And so the fund balance was also identified to support, uh, those times when we needed to depend on it to pay our bills, our payroll, our accounts payable, um, without having to go out and short-term borrow or borrow from other funds, which is kind of frowned upon. So, um...
I just saw some WASB data that they put out that, um, I was watching a presentation, actually. They, they, uh, they had recommended, um, that most school boards should probably fall between the twenty and twenty-five percent. So we're a little bit above that, but that's really good for us to be above that, I think. So, um, so that's the recommended range.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know, but I can speak to the history of it, so.
Thanks, Julie.
No?
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Julie. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All right, for the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So move.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Was that Barb? Second by Barb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
That wasn't celebrating.